Yeah, Weston, yeah, down from Porky's.
We're all set.
Wait, Weston, I think it said West End.
Wes, Weston.
Good evening. I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order a Wednesday, May 8th meeting. You are here because you have requested a variance on an existing zoning rule. You're going to ask us to take this existing zoning rule and change it because it is a particular hardship for you. We're going to ask you to tell us what the hardship is, if this is why you're here before us tonight. We will, the meeting will be conducted in, it's a quasi-legal meeting, so there's a court reporter here who will be taking notes on everything you say, and she's excellent, so you don't have to worry about it. But you do have to speak up clearly and use the microphone when you're talking. What I'm going to do is I have three variances tonight. We will read the variances. We will then ask the city to show the existing zoning rule that you're asking us to change due to the particular difficulties for you. And then from that, I will ask you to come forward and testify. As the audience may, if you have someone here who wants to speak on behalf of it, that will be fine, too. After everyone's testified, the board will ask you questions. We will close the public hearing. Everybody's going to stay right here in this room, and we will discuss it among ourselves. We'll come back into a public hearing, and we will vote, and you will know tonight whether or not your request for your variance has been granted. If it is not granted, you have the option of going to the Court of Common Pleas. I'm going to ask you now if you're going to testify. If you'd please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
You're now officially sworn in. I'm going to ask the board for approval of the minutes of the April 10th meeting, please.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes passed. The first request is Kyle Inbody of Zoning Reserves on behalf of Kroger has requested a variance to allow the construction of an eight-foot, five-inch by fourteen-foot, seven-inch wall sign, 122.7 square feet, which would be 10.7 square feet larger than the 112 square foot maximum allowed size, and would cause this business to further exceed the 336 square foot maximum total aggregate by 3.9.5 square feet for a total of 65, 655.5 square feet at 1094 North Main Street. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, Section 150.84, sign regulations table, the zoning of this property is C commercial, and this chart lists the sign types permitted, number of signs per lot, which you'll see is a three maximum. Sign area per individual sign is a maximum of 112 square feet, and the total sign area allowed, all the signs together that is, is 336 square feet max. In your packet, I did give you a memo that lists all the past variances. I thought that would be important because this property has had a lot of variances regarding signage. I didn't think I needed to read them into the record unless you want me to, but essentially, they fall under all these variances still. And in this case, since they're not doing the same size sign, they want to go larger than a variance is required based on that, unless they were doing the same exact sign size or smaller. Here's an aerial view of the property. Using pictometry, you can see a view. This would be facing the north there, and another view of the rear of the property, and then this would be the front of the property, and this would be the other side of the property. Here's a picture of some of the signage there in front. So you'll see the Kroger logo, then pharmacy, the little clinic, and then there is the drive-through sign currently there. Here's another view, looking more towards the main entrance. Another view of the remainder of the building. And then here's the pylon sign that also exists by variance. And this is just looking back to where that pickup area is for groceries and the sign that relates to the request. This was a sketch that was in your packet showing the proposed location of the sign. Hard to see here, but that symbol B is the proposed location on the wall of the building. And then here in your packet also was the existing signage at 57.74 square feet, a picture, and then the proposed signage, which would be 122.7 square feet. I also laid out the different aggregate signage together, and then tried to at least call out that sign that we're talking about tonight. Here's a rendering of the sign showing the various dimensions. With the sign code, we do draw a box around the furthest point of the lettering or graphics to get that square footage, but it's approximately 14 feet, seven inches by eight feet, five inches. And then we tried to make this chart to show you the existing signage on the wall, and then the pylon and the proposed sign. So that was it as far as the pictures we have. We did not receive any written correspondence or any phone calls after we sent the required letters. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Mr. Inbody, you want to come forward and state your name and your address, please?
Yes, thank you for hearing me. Tonight, I am Kyle Inbody at 609 Terry Street in Fendley, Ohio.
Okay. Would you like to tell us what the particular hardship is with this variance?
Yes. So this current sign that we're proposing, we are trying to identify not only at this Kroger, but all Krogers statewide, nationwide, these different pickup locations. It's a new service that's beginning to roll out. At this particular site, the pickup wall is on the side of the building, and it's not readily accessible or visible from the street. So by taking the existing drive-through sign, which is kind of in a similar location to this pickup window, by making it a little bit larger, we can put the pickup and the pharmacy drive-through on that same sign. And that would make it unfortunately a little bit larger than what is existing, just so the letters are large enough to be read from the street. And that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this request? Members of the board, do you have any questions for Mr. Inbody?
Thank you for the complete excellent application, probably the best zoning variance application I've ever seen.
I would agree with that.
We try to be thorough and really explain it.
Question for both of you. Is it accurate to say that the variances listed predate the marketplace expansion? Let me put it another way. The market, when you built the marketplace, expanded the store. Were any variances for signs at that time?
I do not.
Yes.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Secretary, did you get the second?
David.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will the secretary call the roll, please?
Let's go. Rod Noble?
Yes.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Judy Anus?
Yes.
The member?
Yes.
Your request for your variance was granted. Thank you. I am going to recuse myself from the second request from Jason Miller, and the vice chairman, Hobie Johnson, is going to conduct that. Excuse me.
Second item on our agenda tonight is from Jason Miller at 1007 Sand Ridge Road has requested a variance to allow the construction of a 10-foot by 12-foot accessory structure, which would encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to the east in the R1 low-density residential zone. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, Section 150.44, accessory uses F, required setbacks for accessory uses under one, an accessory use must meet the setbacks as described in the accessory use setback table on the following page, which is titled Table 22, accessory use setback table. So in this case, this is considered an other accessory use, and when you look across the chart, you would compare the height limitation, which in this case is 12 feet or less. So it'd be required to be five feet from the principal structure, and then the required front yard setback applies the same as applicable to the principal structure. So basically, the same as a house setback in the front yard, and then the side yard, five-foot minimum, and then the rear yard, five-foot minimum. So in this case, the front yard setback is what the variance request is for. It is a corner lot. And then under Section 150.23, the R1 low-density residential zone, under the R1 zone standards, you'll see the front yard setback is the 25-foot minimum. Looking at an aerial view of the property, you will see, again, it's at the corner of Sand Ridge Road and Indian Ridge Drive. Using pictometry, you can see the rear of the property. It's to be facing north. And then this is the other front of the house, the Indian Ridge frontage. Here's another view of the side of the house. And then here's looking at the front of the house from Sand Ridge. Here's a picture of the front of the home. And then here's looking at the other front yard, is what the zoning code considers that, along Indian Ridge. And this is angling a bit closer to where he has requested to place the shed. And then here's looking, this would be more facing northwest towards the yard there. There were actually two sketches in your packet, so here is the proposed shed highlighted at 10 feet by 12 feet for the dimensions, 12-foot tall. And then here's another sketch that was part of your packet to show the aerial view, and I'm showing that proposed shed location. We did receive, after sending the required letters, two emails from neighbors. So the one I will read into the record, and I apologize, I'm not sure I'm going to say the name right, Elsabi Fori, we received it Friday, April 26, 2024, 8:42 a.m. to the planning department, subject zoning application, and it states, "Good morning. We received the attached letter from you. We have no issues with our neighbor, Jason Building. We approve. Thank you." And this person does live at 1004 Arrowhead Drive. The second email was received Friday, April 26, 2024, at 3:08 p.m. It went to the planning department, general email, and the subject says variance request for Jason Miller. It states, "Dear Ms. Saylor, I received the letter regarding a variance request for my neighbor, Jason Miller, at 1007 Sand Ridge Road. I live next door at 1013 Sand Ridge Road, and I have no objection to the requested variance. Sincerely, Mark A. Tyson." I also just wanted to make sure you're aware that back on July 14, 2010, Jason Miller did receive a variance for this property for the deck to encroach into the rear yard setback. Again, doesn't really necessarily pertain to this request, but I just wanted you to be aware of the history there, and that was approved. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you, Heather. Is there someone here who would like to speak on that behalf? Sir, if you would come to the podium, state your name and your address, and your reason why you feel this is necessary.
My name is Jason Miller of 1007 Sand Ridge. I feel it's necessary. From pictures, you can see all my yard equipment alongside the house there. That would help get that off of there and make it look more presentable. I need it to that, I know you guys call it a front yard, but my side yard, because the way my deck is, there's just not enough room for me to be able to do everything that I want to do, my lawnmower, everything else. And not only that, but it doesn't show in the pictures, it doesn't show the slope that my yard is at. So being able to pour the concrete and everything else and have that, having that slope is just not going to work out well. Where I'm asking to have this at, I can go right through the gate of my fence, straight back, it's flat, it's far enough away from the house. The neighbors, I talked to them all personally, they were all happy with it. I mean, it's just, it just works out.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, Mr. Miller?
No, other than I did drive by today, and there is a pretty good swell in your backyard, like you said.
Yes, there is.
I would agree with you on that.
It seems like the perfect example of a practical difficulty created because of the topography of the property, and that's, that's what we need to consider when we deliberate this. One question for you. Would you be willing to move the building to the west as far as possible to get it as far out of that front yard setback from Indian Ridge?
That's even, I'm willing.
I see you've got it tucked back there in the corner, but would you be willing to move it back to the west as far as you can?
When we were looking at it, though, it looked like that if he moves it much farther that way, he's going to have that swell, and that problem.
Yeah, I just am saying as far as he can. I think you were.
Yeah, I mean, I can move it anywhere in that, you know what I mean? It's just, I gotta.
I don't want to cause you a problem with that swale.
Yeah, and that's, that's my.
But get it as far, as close to the swale as you can.
Yeah. I have no problem with that. I just, it just works out best if it's right, you know, along where it's not supposed to be, unfortunately.
Yeah, when I was over there looking at the measurements, I think he's about as far as he can get for that swell. He moves a foot, he's going to be entering it. He can't move it any farther than what he has planned.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, stay there at the podium, please. We're going to go into a session privately, and we'll discuss this, and then come back out for a vote.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion among us that needs to be had?
I think it's the same problem with having those two front yards, being in a corner lot. It's like the corner lot curse, you know?
Yes, it is.
He always encroaches in that backyard.
And it's been.
Yeah, when measuring, when looking out there and looking at the measurements, if he moves it even another half a foot, he's going to be in that swale. He can't go any farther than where he is.
I guess I didn't see the swale delineate on any of the drawings that I.
Yeah, really, it really can unless you go out there and take a look at it.
I went out and looked.
Hey, it looks like it starts right about here, starts to drop.
Are there any other things we need to consider before we vote?
I mean, this is like, the topography clearly is hardship, you know? So I think that's pretty clearly is in the.
Absolutely.
Perfect example.
Okay, we're going to go back into public session and make our vote. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have it moved and seconded.
Who's second?
David again?
Hidden down there.
All set. All those ready to vote? Go ahead, sir.
The member?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
I'm sorry?
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
Chris Ostrowski?
Yes.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Your variance has been granted, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Please make sure to check in with Heather to make sure you're doing everything in the right way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
The third variance is David Beblow on behalf of Precision Alloy Services, Inc., has requested a variance to allow the construction of a 65-foot, 8-inch by 200-foot addition, a warehouse, which would provide six street trees instead of the required nine street trees. Based on the 350-foot of the frontage of the lots, one street tree required per 40 linear feet, and would provide 10 canopy or evergreen trees, 18 required, two ornamental trees, 14 required, and 35 shrubs, 70 required, at the western lot line and scattered around the site. Instead of the required large buffer, a strip of land 30 feet in depth with at least five canopy trees per 100 feet of length, and at least 20 shrubs per 100 linear feet between the IE Innovation and Employment Zone at 726 Innovation Drive, which is adjacent to the A1 Agricultural and I Industrial. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, Section 150.78, street trees under A, except for lots in the Central Business District or the Bowling Green Gateway District, which have parking areas fronting Main Street or Worcester Street, and are regulated by 150.72D. For any new development or expansion of an existing building by more than 20% GFA, street trees shall be planted at a rate of one tree per 40 linear feet of frontage. The other section of the zoning code that applies is Section 150.80, buffering. Under B, a buffer shall be provided as set forth in the buffer requirements by zoner district, Table 26, for any new development or an expansion of an existing building by more than 20% of GFA. Buffer yard categories of small, large, and mounding are defined in this section. Under C, buffers shall be located along the outer perimeter of the lot, parallel to and extending along 100% of the shared lot lines. Buffers may be broken where vehicle accessways connect one lot to an adjacent lot. Further reading this section, under F, in this case, a large buffer applies. A large buffer shall consist of a strip of land adjacent to the boundary of two zones or districts. The strip of land shall be 30 feet in depth. The strip of land shall be planted with at least five canopy or evergreen trees per 100 feet of length, at least four ornamental trees per 100 feet of length, and at least 20 shrubs per 100 feet of length. Here is Table 26, buffer requirements by zone or district table. Here we have large highlighted, so you'll see that the zoning is Innovation and Employment on the left side of the chart, and then it's adjacent to the I institutional, which says L for the large. And then it's also adjacent to A1 large. That would be further to the south on that property. Here's an aerial view of the property, where I tried to highlight in green there, the squiggly line, that would be to the west of the property. This indicates where buffering is required per that Section 150.80. And then in blue, highlighted along the frontage there, indicates where the street trees are required per Section 150.78. Here's an aerial view of the property. Again, to the left there, which would be to the west, that's municipal court, city-owned property, and then the next parcel is owned by separate ownership but is zoned agricultural. Using pictometry, you can see the property there on the right of the screen, and then to the left, those adjacent uses. Another view of the side of the property. Here's the front of the property from Innovation Drive. Here's the rear of the property, and then the other side of the property. Here's a picture, if you're driving down Innovation Drive, there you'd be facing northwest, looking at the building. This is zoomed in a little bit closer there to the front and then the side. This is the front of the building. And then this is looking at the side of the building where they would like to add that addition, and then you can see municipal court building in the background. This is looking from the municipal court property at the back of the building. Another view of the back of the building. And then this is angled at the back of the building, more towards the side where that addition would be going. Here is a sketch that was in your packet showing the proposed landscaping plan. I also provided to you a copy of an email that we received from an adjoining property owner. I will read this into the record. It is from Lenny Klaus. It was received on Monday, April 29, 2024, at 10:22 a.m. It went to the general planning department, and the owner is Woodpecker Enterprises. And the email reads, "We have no problems with the request for Woodpecker Enterprises. Please see attached." And that was it. We didn't have any phone calls or other emails. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Mr. Beblow? State your name and address, please.
Dave Beblow, 9140 Whispering Hill Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I would, I would say that this gentleman was here for the last meeting, that it ended in a, in a tie, three to three, people voting for his request, three against, which means that nothing could happen. So thank you for coming back and retrying. And I would like to note that you did, in your new application, put in everything that we had suggested. You changed it to what we had suggested, so thank you for that. Now, you can talk. Tell us what the particular difficulties are with this.
Well, Colleen from the contractor met with Adrian, your arborist, and they came up with that plan, which we all feel substantially meets what the, what the code is trying to provide. You know, we'd love to have more trees in the front, but there's driveways, and then there's a gravel area, and then there's underground utilities. And in the back, there's a drainage swale. So we put in as many trees as, as we could. So we think it substantially is, meets the intent of the code.
We thank you for meeting with our arborists on that.
That was Colleen. She did an awesome job, I think.
I think the plan's fantastic. It's a definite improvement to what's out there now, that's for sure. But, you know, looking at the amount of, you know, vegetation that's out there now compared to what this plan allows for, provides for, I think it's an amazing design. Thank you.
And we appreciate the fact that you listened to what we had to ask, that you followed through with the proper panels, and presented an excellent program. Thank you.
Excellent.
My only question would be the management and maintenance of this, because I think the original stuff that you put in didn't fare very well, did it?
Well, we tried to plant it too early in the summer, so we will wait until the fall to put all the plantings in.
So that, that would be great. Thank you.
You want to state your name and address, please?
Colleen Shear, 22 Dudley Boulevard, Norwalk, Ohio. Meeting with Adrian, she also pointed out that the soil out there is very compacted and very stony. So she gave us quite the lengthy list of recommended species that would thrive in soil conditions as such, and we plan to go with.
Thank you.
Those, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to go back to the management and the maintenance piece. So as pieces die off, there is an intent to take and bring it back, I would assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other comments?
Mr. Beblow, you probably recall from last month when you were here that I had some struggles with the practical difficulty part of this. And I tried to explain at that time that according to our zoning code, the board must find that the strict application of the zoning code would result in practical difficulties for the property owner. It further says in the code that in your application, that you must present credible evidence of those practical difficulties. I see three of them that you listed in the application. The first one is the initial expense and ongoing maintenance of installing and taking care of the trees. I challenge you a little bit on that one because my day job is I run an arboretum and botanical garden, so I got a little sense of how that all works. The second part is that the root structures not interfere with underground utilities. You know, that can be overcome with oops in where you place the, the trees. And the third is interfering with the existing signage. So I still struggle with this practical difficulty part. Is there anything else that you can offer in terms of what's called in the code credible evidence that you can help me get over my struggles with this, this part of it?
You know, the, the lot is substantially covered with trees with the number that are there now. I just, I don't, you know, I guess we could fill in the one other area with more shrubberies, but we thought we had come up with a pretty good compromise here.
And I appreciate that you did that. I really do. My, my other concern that you may recall from last time is the institutional zoning parcel that now contains our city municipal court, as well as some youth athletic fields, and the agricultural piece to the south that I would predict, and with my crystal ball, eventually will be rezoned to some other kind of use. And the city worked very hard with a very well-vetted and qualified consultant and came up with these standards. They're brand new. They're only six months old. Presumably, they're modern-day type standards and not something that was just arbitrary and capriciously put into the code. So I still have that concern also about protecting that, those other land uses adjacent to you. They're less intensive. That's why they include these buffer requirements. And you may not always be there. There could possibly be some more intensive use in, in your property today. So I still do struggle with this from the technical parts of the zoning code where. And you may not always be there, there could possibly be some more intensive use in, in your property today. So I still do struggle with this from the, the technical parts of the zoning code where the applicant needs to show with credible evidence that practical difficulty and that we have those seven criteria that we need to look at and satisfy ourselves that the credible, or the practical difficulty rather, exists. And I just, I just have a hard time with that. I don't think that, that credible evidence is there. I think it's important to protect that institutional parcel. I also think that it would be bad precedent for this board, this new, into this new zoning code, to grant a variance in this magnitude where we're agreeing to eliminate a 30-foot buffer strip that's required in more than half of the number of plantings that were required in that. That's, that's a substantial variance, and that's one of the big things that we are to consider. In fact, it says the board shall consider those seven things. So I'm afraid I still have a problem with it.
Anyone else have any comments?
I just have the opposite effect. I think, I think it's plenty. I don't think you need to worry about the agricultural side going to something else in the future, because we can't consider that as out of our realm. And two, considering what's out there, you know, the backside of the municipal building is not something I'm worried about people seeing. But compared to the planting that's out there currently, because it's grandfathered in, I think it's a huge improvement to what's out there. And again, the soccer fields are used limited amount of time throughout the year. It's not like a park that's everybody's going to visit every single day. So I totally disagree with Ron. I think it's completely, the hardships are completely correct, and I agree with what they have put out there. And I think meeting with the arborist and coming up with a plan is a great idea and a great step. I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Kevin, you go back to the backside of the building where the signage is at, Heather? Because is that the signage that you're trying to protect?
Well, there's a sign on the back and a sign on the side.
That's what you're trying to protect?
Yeah, and that's the sign where I'm at.
That's visible from where? Is it visible from Innovation Drive? No, it's invisible to what?
No, that's the other side.
Dunbridge, you can see it from Dunbridge Road.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Chris, I agree with what you say, and I understand and appreciate your position. I'm looking at it more from a, a technical point of view, I guess, in that the, the new code was, was written to-
Well, the new code was written where we're taking consideration. I mean, I think you're really kind of reaching to find a reason not to vote for it, and I just think you're wrong. I mean, you're talking about agricultural, maybe it'll be rezoned to something else. You can't even take that into consideration. That's not part of our job. You have to consider what is there now, not the future.
All right, gentlemen.
I won't argue with you, but I, I do, I think that is-
Well, you're arguing with me, but that's okay.
I didn't tell you you were wrong.
Everyone is entitled their, their opinion. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to go back into public hearing and I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
I will so move.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Chris Zstrowski?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
No.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Judianis?
Yes.
Tim Emmer?
Yes.
Your request for your variance has been granted, and we appreciate your working with us on coming back the second time to make sure it was completed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? I would like to take note that unfortunately, term limitations has caught up with Chris, and he will be greatly missed. Chris and I have served on many boards together, and it's always a delight to work with him. So you will be missed, Chris, and thank you for your service.
It's only been, what, 12 years? That's all?
Now I will entertain a motion for adjournment, but you know, you can't leave until you sign, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You can vote with your feet after you sign the paperwork.